That's it? Thank you, John. I will call the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting to order is December 16th. We'll start with a roll call. I am John Deveraux, member.
George Lavash, member.
Yael Gilbo, member.
Steve Perry, member.
Our first and only case as far as I can see today is case, let's see if I can find the number, I think it's 1216-2024-1. The owner name is Winfried Van Morik and Kimberly Queenen. The applicant's name is David Halliwell. And our representation is Joel Connelly from the Dubay Group. And let me see, there we go. The variance from Litchfield zoning order Article 310.00 to allow for a three lot subdivision on Route 3A resulting in one lot having a frontage of 99.36 feet and the other two lots having a frontage of the specified 150 feet each in a residential zone. Name applicant is David Halliwell. Owner is Winfried Van Morik and Kimberly Queenen. Location is 288 Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire. Map 12, Lot 22. Who is representing the?
Yeah, Joel Connelly.
Okay. Before we actually get moving, we have only four of the five members of a full board. You will have an option to request an extension, is that the right word? To another date if you would prefer having a full board. There is no guarantee that we'll have a full board the next time that we meet. But if you're okay with four, we can proceed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, go ahead and state your case, please.
Yeah. My name is Joel Connelly with the debate group. This is David Halliwell. He's under contract to purchase the property located at 288 Charles Bancroft Highway. We are seeking a variance to allow to subdivide this lot into three residential lots. The parcel currently consists of a residential house with a barn and another building is referred to as a pole barn. And then it's also this recently constructed winery building that's not quite yet complete. And so the proposal is to, you know, take and raise the barn, pole barn, and then to convert that winery building into a residential unit. In order to do that, we need to subdivide the property into at least two to allow for the house and this new residential dwelling to be on separate lots. The problem with that is that the house sits kind of centered in that property, not really allowing for you to reasonably subdivide that, allowing for both have frontages. In addition to that, this property, I mean, it's fairly substantial in size. It easily can support three residential lots. I've kind of looked at it in three different ways. I mean, you could build a road down this thing and get three lots. You can, you know, no matter where you put the road, it's always three lots. Really, the only thing that makes this lot not meet the requirements for three lots is that frontage being a little bit shorter than that one lot. But by, you know, given that the winery unit, you know, a little less frontage, it actually, you know, creates three very good, like rectangular areas for, you know, for dwellings. You know, the winery would be kind of centered in that lot with the existing house being kind of centered in that lot. And then in the back towards the river, you'd have another nice area for putting a residence come around in the center of that. And that parcel has its frontage coming down the side. They all easily meet all the other requirements, you know, minimum lot area, minimum dry area, building envelope, and even shape factor. The only one that's, you know, the low on the shape factor is be that, obviously, that back one, which is, you know, substantially a large lot. It's, you know, almost three times the size of the required lot. So that's, and as far as these, the intent of this also is that Dave's looking to have family members live on this lot. He's looking to buy this land, have his parents live on this land, him live on this land. It's not like he's coming in here to cut this up to sell him off. He's looking to, you know, personally live in that winery building once it's converted over to a residential dwelling. I mean, this is much lower impact on the neighborhood as a whole versus the current approved, you know, halfway constructed winery. You know, the approved plans have 17 plus minus parking spaces, you know, a special occasion tent area, a lot of, you know, drainage infrastructure is going in. You'd have potentially, you know, I mean, they're having a special occasion tent, assuming they're having special occasion events there. So you could get quite a bit of traffic in and out of this place if it was a winery, which, you know, converting it to a residential dwelling, which are very much needed things in, you know, today's world, is, you know, a good use of it, I think. And, you know, much more in line with the, you know, what the zoning ordinance is intended to be protecting, you know, the public from. Are there any questions on that portion of them?
Any questions? How do you access the back, the back lot, the large lot?
It'll be through a shared driveway. So one, use the existing curb cut, one shared driveway. It would, you know, be wider in the front to accommodate, you know, in and out traffic. And then it could narrow down for a single, you know, 12-foot wide access to the back. Obviously, when you actually get the, you know, building permits up of that, they'll require, you know, turnaround area for, you know, delivery vehicles and stuff like that. I believe it's like a 28-foot radius inside. So there'll be some sort of a circular driveway at the end to accommodate those.
Would the winery lot use the same easement or a different?
Same, yeah, yeah, yeah. If you look on page two, you can see a little better of the topography and stuff like that. See the driveway comes in, you know, Hammer, you know, has a little turnouts for each lot.
Thank you.
So you show the 250-foot protected shoreline protection setback. But the builders are inside of that? Is that because of the designation of the river or?
Yeah, towards the river, yeah, they'll be, you're allowed to put buildings and stuff in that 250-foot. 250-foot means you need a permit. That first section is basically just has certain criteria. It's the next, the first 150 that really gives you, you know, all your impervious areas and stuff, you have to, you know, get permitted through the state.
But you will need a permit in order?
Yeah, regardless of that lot, we'll, you know, when it comes time to construct a house there, we'll go to the state for a permit regardless of where you put the house. But yeah, I'd be probably right somewhere in that, between that 150 to 250, where, you know, a lot of that stuff would go. And it's, you know, it's obviously going to have to meet all those criteria of the Shoreland Act.
Any other questions?
So you're using the, so you have 90 feet of frontage or 99 feet for?
What's my zoning on a shared driveway?
I could not find one. So we don't have a zoning law for shared driveways that I could see?
No.
And?
We had an issue with that before on page.
Yeah, I don't know. I tried searching today trying to find it. So?
Back in years past, the planning board would exercise a measure to not allow more than two off of a shared driveway. And the reason for that was you could just make, it was all about the curb cut because I'm sure you'd probably have a tough time getting three curb cuts here. And that would be a restriction to the lot. But I know that they always tried to just go with two and then require it to be, say, 20 feet wide or something. So if there was ever an issue, it could be divided. But that was years ago. I have no idea whether.
I know, I'm looking at three houses on the same curb cut.
And I should know, is our septic setback from wetlands is?
That's 100 feet.
Is 100 feet, right?
Yes, 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 more than typical. 75 and 100 feet.
50 no disturb, 75 no building, right, 100 feet septic.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe one of the things, but, you know, this proposal is to remove a lot of structures out of that, you know, 50-foot buffer there, those, you know, a little more conforming protect that wetland.
Yeah, so basically the front house septic is probably non-conforming, the existing.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna get.
But it's grandfathered in for existing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there'll be a new septic system for both the, you know, those buildings.
Which we don't really have to consider.
No, no, I know. But well, if they created a lot, they couldn't put a septic system on, then it'd be an issue, I would think. But that might be planning. They're looking, we only were ruling on the variance for the, for the frontage.
Any other questions for now? Would you like to step through the various variance stipulations with your responses?
Yeah. Do you want me to read the whole thing or just responses or just?
Actually, read the whole thing just so that it's in the record.
Yeah. Okay. A variance requested from Section 310 of the zoning ordinance to allow, for the following reasons, to allow for a real subdivision on 3A resulting in one lot having a frontage of 99.36 feet and the other two having a frontage of 150.0 feet, residents of district. The variance, so supporting checks, sorry. We got a little ahead. The variance will not be contrary to public interest because the parcel being subdivided is large enough in good figures so it can easily accommodate the three proposed lots, meeting all other zoning subdivision requirements with the exception of frontage. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the intent of the ordinance is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by limiting development to avoid overcrowding and to allow for safe access from public roads. The parcel being subdivided is more than sufficient to support three lots. With regards to the frontage and safe access, the post subdivision will utilize a single shared driveway. This will allow for safe access to the parcels from the public road. Additionally, the residential lots will have less traffic than the current approved use. Substantial justice will be done because the subdivision will allow for the creation of needed residential dwellings and better use the currently underutilized parcel of land. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished because the proposed subdivision associated residential dwellings will fit with the character of the part of town it is located in and the town as a whole. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The purpose of this subparagraf, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose of the ordinance provisions, and the specific applications of that provision to the property. And the property's use is reasonable use, is a reasonable one. The subject parcel is uniquely shaped, it is deeper than it is wide, and the property lines run at angles to the road. The shape of this parcel would allow for a three lot subdivision meeting all requirements, to best my knowledge, based on the construction of a short road. The construction of a said road would be a hardship on the applicant, a burden on the town. Seeing that with the construction of an unnecessary road, a three lot subdivision would be allowed, a three lot subdivision is a reasonable use of the property. If criterion, subparagraph A, are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist and only if owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the other properties in the area of the property cannot be reasonable use in strict enforcement ordinance. And variance therefore is necessary to be established, necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. Due to the shape of the lot, the location of the existing house, and the wetlands, and location lens, it would be, it would not be possible to subdivide the house from the second structure that is being converted into a residential dwelling to meet building setbacks to the existing house. I mean, you could, but it would be very, at a severe angle to the right of way and make a very odd-shaped lot to try to get that side setback on that existing house.
Okay. Any questions? Any further questions?
I don't have a question.
Open up the meeting to abutters who would like to speak for the variance. Please come up and state your name and address.
Do you want to take ours?
Oh, yeah, you could take, you could take a sidestep just for now. Do we have any, anybody to support the variance?
I have a question.
Your safety name first. Oh, I'm sorry.
Geneburg, 294 Charles Bancroft Highway, north of the property in question. This is my wife, Margaret. A question concerning the variance on that side of 3A, Charles Bancroft Highway. How many lots have frontage of less than 150 feet? Do you have any idea?
Good question, couldn't answer that.
I think, I haven't, I haven't measured them, but it seems like most of them are 150 feet or larger.
There are a lot of larger lots along that highway.
Correct.
And they, I don't find that this lot is uniquely shaped. Our lot is shaped similarly.
So you're speaking opposing the variance?
Well, I, just as to give you, and I, some food for thought. I looked at the application, we looked at the application, and it's whether the criteria has been met, first of all. And secondly, one, the one, our adjoining property line, as you've noted, has quite a bit of wetlands in there. We have a conservation easement on our section of the wetlands. This property does not. And I don't know if that is something that as part of an acceptance of a variance, you could require that to protect that.
Yeah, there are times when cases come in that will affect the wetland setbacks. In this particular case, it doesn't appear to be one of the things we are, we're talking about, at least for this particular case.
And you wouldn't consider requiring a wetlands setback?
Oh, there would be, there are setbacks. It's just that the proposed plan does not violate them, or at least according to the billing inspector, it has not violated.
Right, no, there's no, no structure there at this point, I think. All right, so I guess then when it comes down to, but this is the only board that you can come and actually have that conversation with, correct?
That's typically correct, yes.
Because conservation, no one is here from the Conservation Commission.
If there was a wetlands issue for the variance, then we would, you would require the Conservation Commission to speak on it. This is not a case for this particular case.
Well, if you look at the actual flow of that water source, it has changed significantly from what it shows on the map. And it gets closer.
For clarification, if we approve or deny this variance, if we approve it, it's going to go forward to the planning board. They have to go to the planning board in order to then subdivide the property.
Okay, so that's when you'd have those conversations?
That's when all of that would, they would have to then concur with.
Yeah, we just want to protect that area from disturbance.
And if at that point they determine that there's going to be a wetland violation, then they'll have to come back to the zoning board to get permission to do so if they choose to continue.
Oh, okay, all right.
Right. And so I was pointing out some things with certain setbacks. So like there's a no disturb 50 feet from any wetland boundary, right? And then they can't put a structure within 75. And then they can't put a septic system within 100 feet. So if they were to do that plan, you know, if they were given permission today, their plan would have to go through that criteria for the planning board.
Right, right.
But if one house is grandfathered?
It's there.
Doesn't, doesn't it, and there's going to be a new owner of the property, doesn't the new owner have to bring the property up to modern standards?
I don't think so.
It's grandfathered.
Yeah, right.
I think, as best I can tell, if, only if they're going to change or add to the, to the property and build upon it, then they have to meet the criteria, the latest and greatest criteria.
Right. So if they're going to live in the house that's there, that one's grandfathered in.
That's my impression.
Right.
Okay.
I believe so too. I'm not a lawyer.
My question is, do we really need to, does the third lot really need the frontage on that if it has a shared driveway? This area right here is the frontage for that.
Every lot's supposed to have its own frontage.
Yeah, yes.
Are there any other abutters that would like to be, to speak in favor of the, of the variance? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Lead home, 287 Charles Bancroft Highway. I'm in favor of it. But the only thing I'm going to say is, if we are going to let three people on one driveway, I just want it on the record that I'm coming next.
Thank you.
I'm coming next. That's fine with me. They can do what they want and I appreciate it, but.
We have to work on every, every single case is unique, right? And so we judge every lot as an individual.
I have no problems with it.
And there is no.
If it's fair on that side of the road, it's fair on my side of it.
But it's, we don't establish precedent, okay?
Thank you very much.
Are there any other abutters that would speak for, for the variance? Are there any abutters that would like to speak against the variance? Any other public input? Any final questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Any responses before we close public input?
Excuse me. Yeah, I guess, so clarifying the record on the, on the wetlands themselves, there's going to be no encroachments on wetlands. We're not proposing any wetland impacts. Like I said, if anything, we're actually just pulling stuff outside, out of that, the setbacks themselves. And we have no, no intent to impact any wetlands. As far as, I mean, can't speak for Dave completely, but as far as the areas they're talking about, I mean, the biggest area is towards the front where the wetland is. And that, I understand, we have setbacks controlling that. And I understand that kind of like the, you know, the privacy in the back and kind of like a little bit of a buffer. I mean, there are fields on both sides of the property line in that area there. But I think, talking with Dave quickly, is that, I mean, even some of the, you know, he's not intending to build, you know, in that narrower area of the lot.
No.
And, I mean, he'd be open to, you know, providing some sort of a buffer if that, you know, be required as part of, you know, approval. And I know it's not, you know, under the review of this board, but, I mean, I want to make that stipulation if that's, you know, sways the board in a favorable direction.
Thank you. Any final questions for the applicant? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close public input?
Make a motion to close public input.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we have now closed public input. We will deliberate and we will step through the stipulations to become to a decision. Would you like to begin discussion?
So I think we have 150-foot frontage rule. And the 99 feet is quite a bit shorter than 150 feet, you know, by one-third. Our shape factor is to try to restrict flag lots. This, they do meet the shape factor with the .42, but it's borderline on the flag lot. So, I don't know. It's, seems like we're getting around subdivision rules and minimum frontage by going a shared driveway. That's just my point, my, my feeling. It's, you know, it's not close on the frontage. It's one-third of the required frontage. I mean, it's two-thirds on the required frontage. Yeah, they're missing a third.
Yeah. No, I would agree with you on that. I'm not a fan of a shared driveway for a piece of property to feed three pieces, well, to subdivide into three pieces when you could put in a road.
Absolutely.
To prevent that issue and prevent the issue of the frontage.
And then if you did put in a road, you could actually access more house lots back then?
You probably could.
Shall we step through the variances or the stipulations? We can kind of vote on each one of them.
Yeah.
So the first one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the parcel being, oh, so the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. That's, that's the stipulation. Feel that there's any, that they're, that they substantiated that, that variance, that
I think it would be contrary to the public interest because we're reducing the frontage of one of the lots by a third. In order to grant it, of course.
The next one is the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, has the spirit of the ordinance been observed from their stipulation?
It's, the shared driveway is, you know, it's not a road. You have three houses sharing the driveway. They now, you're putting the burden on the future owners to, you know, enter in contracts to do plowing and maintenance of that shared driveway. There may be family members to begin with today, but that doesn't mean the next set of owners won't be. So I'm not sure if the public interest is 100%.
I'd say the spirit of the ordinance is not observed because of the fact that there is substantial enough land on the property to subdivide to three lots if they put in a roadway.
Substantial justice is not done. So essentially, our conclusion for number three is substantial justice is not done by allowing this variance.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Fourth is the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. I would agree that, I think that they would not diminish the area by allowing this.
No, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the last one is the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And I believe we just talked about the other option of having a road access.
Yeah.
Although, I mean, and that's, and that's the original intent of the ordinance is to, is to build a road when it's, when it makes sense to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how to word it appropriately, but usually you give a variance to a property that is off by just a little bit or maybe almost makes it but doesn't quite have enough. This one has enough. It's just not wanting to go about it the way it would need to be done.
So would anybody would like to make a motion for this case? Anybody?
I think you have it in front of you.
I'm sorry?
I think you have it in front of you.
Okay. So based on our deliberation, we feel that the, that the variance is, is not granted due to not meeting spirit of ordinance. And, and, and is contrary to public interest. Not granted due to not meeting spirit of ordinance and is contrary to the public interest. Those are the two main ones which really kind of fall out of this. I don't think it really, I mean, really all we need is one, but that's, that's what we feel. Right on the second on that motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
So John Deveraux made motion. Seconded by?
Al Gilbo.
Can I explain your last name again?
G U I L.
G U I L?
B E A U L T.
I've never explained your last name.
Need your name tag up front.
Actually, we never was having.
We have a motion and a second. All in, all in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the denial?
Going four to zero.
So it's, the, the motion was to deny, and it's, that motion was approved four to zero. So unfortunately, the motion was denied.
Thank you, guys.
Is there any other business?
We were supposed to vote on minutes, I think.
It is in the, in the agenda to vote on minutes if, if you, if you'd like to do so.
I reviewed them and saw nothing wrong with them.
Did anybody else review the, the minutes?
I actually glanced through them quick. I didn't find anything wrong with them.
That wasn't a glance, did he?
I'd be fine with doing it.
Okay, so we can make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then one abstaining, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, second motion is for the minutes. So, right down. Motion on minutes. Sixteen, two oh two, ten. Last eight minutes. I think that's all we have for, for business.
Yep.
We're here, motion to adjourn.
I'll move a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Steve, just second this.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.